Oh, and then hit a button. Okay. So this is the Maynard zoning board of appeals. It's July 25th, 2022. It's 7:00 PM. The meeting is being held remote. On our agenda, we have several items. First one is approval of minutes from the June 27th meeting. I assume we reviewed it. Does anybody have any comments, corrections?
No.
So I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 27th meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Do I get a second?
Second motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, you want to do a roll call?
Um, okay. And tonight, just to for, to clarify, we have Brad and Paige are both voting members tonight. Um, so I will start with Leslie.
Here.
Jerry.
Oh. Just a reminder that you can't. If you, if you mute yourself, you just have to raise your hand or let me know because then I will. There you go. I allowed you to unmute.
Oh, thank you. I'm here.
Oh, Paige also. There you go.
Okay, Brad.
Here.
And Paul.
Yes. And so that was that attendance or was that approving the minutes?
That is approving the minutes. If you'd like, I can run through again who's attending tonight and voting.
Quick thing, Bill. I had one correction the other day when I talked with you about the minutes. Are we approving what was corrected or?
Yes, yes. I corrected them on the spot.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, election of a ZBA chair. For FY '23. Bill, I let you take charge on this.
Typically, um, the chair is elected at the first meeting after the beginning of the fiscal year. Um. It's going to be up to the board. In the event there was a new chair elected. At times, the board has opted to allow the chair to finish out the hearing, whichever the case. The board desires. Also, Paul has indicated he is willing to run again. Um, and if there's a nomination or there are other. There are other nominations or people would be like to be considered. You can raise your hand as interested or to nominate another individual. Um, I've asked you all about this, I think, last week or 10 days ago. I have not heard anything at all. And also, I would ask if the board does take a choose to vote. That they also remember that we want to. Elect a vice chair, but also if we want to continue our policy of allowing the chair to execute decisions. Rather than having the entire board come in and do it, as we all know, that has, that was cumbersome. So I would. Say, let's make it a three-part discussion or nomination. So that, I think, Mr. Chair, I'll leave it to you.
All right, Leslie had her hand up a while ago.
Because I wanted to nominate you, Paul. And gee, as a vice chair, how about Paige? And while we're at it. Let's let the chair make, uh, do all that heavy lifting. So we don't all have to come in.
But I would, I just, that's great. But I think we should, we should take those as three separate votes. So we're just clear on that. If, and to see if there's any other, any other members have any input.
Okay, so I nominate Paul for chair.
Gosh.
Second.
Who's that, Jerry? Second?
Second, yes, Jerry.
Brad, Paige, any comments? You want to stick with me? You want to volunteer somebody else?
Oh, I think I said, I am all about volunteering you again.
I think you do a great job.
Oh, gosh. So seeing that that's folks that are here. Uh, maybe we should have a vote or did we just do that?
No, we should have a roll call though.
All right, roll call it.
Um, yes, I.
Leslie, okay. Jerry?
Jerry, yes.
Paige? Okay, one of us, Brad.
Yes.
And did I forget about any Paul?
Well, yes, I guess.
I think that's unanimous. Did I miss anybody for chair?
No.
And Brad even used his little hand. Look, you, Brad.
I didn't know I did that, but that's okay.
Okay, and now if it's okay, what about the vice chair? I think we had a nomination on the floor, which was, I believe, Leslie had made for Paige.
I make a motion that we, well, I nominate Paige. Shapika, is that how you say your name?
Yes.
As vice chair.
Second.
Second, all right. So.
Okay, let's go down the list again. Is this on my screen? Jerry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Paul?
Definitely, yes.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And now for our, the execution of decisions. This sounds very grim, but. Save us all from running into my office or me running out to you. Uh, this, I would request a vote to allow the chair to sign on behalf of the board in all decisions for the zoning board of appeals for the fiscal year. Of '23, please.
We get a motion to that?
Make a, okay, make a motion to allow the chair to sign for paperwork. Related to the board so that the members do not have to appear in person.
Assuming that it was an affirmed vote, right?
And Jerry seconds.
Second.
Jerry, good.
So roll call of that.
Okay, let's see what we have. Oh, everybody disappeared. They ran away. Um, okay, Paige?
Yes.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And did I get Jerry? I think Jerry, did I get him? Oh, he's, okay, yes. That's, okay, well done. Okay.
Bill, on, on, on that decision, I would like to see everybody sign it. To acknowledge it for the calendar or the fiscal year coming up so that we have a paper trail to say. That's what we're doing.
Okay, I will, I will prepare a. A certificate of vote. That, uh, that clarifies this approach. And then each of you can come in with a proper appointment to my office and sign, and you'll remember why you have to, why it's a good idea to do this. And then we'll, we'll get everybody signed, but I will get that on the record, Paul.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is a public hearing continued from the June 27th meeting. Which is an application to consider the special permit request of Leslie Zelampstey to allow home occupation dog training. Based at her residence at nine Pine Hill Road in Maynard. This was a electronic screw up last month. We apologize for whatever happened, Leslie. But if you would speak to your application, we'd appreciate it. Uh, but we got to get you unmuted. There we go.
So, um, I am a dog trainer. I've been a dog trainer for about 30 years and. The majority of my lessons are private lessons in people's homes. So generally speaking. People aren't really on my premises to take classes or anything like that. Looking at maybe, hmm, tops, a class of up to five people. Maybe a total usage of like five hours a week. Um, and that will be, oh, you know, Sunday through Sunday. Um, so the other situation that I have currently is that the numbers might go up just in the next few weeks in terms of usage because. I was unfortunately in the accident, not a car accident, but a accident in the house that I'm having to use a wheelchair. So it's very hard for me to get to my clients at this point. So it's particularly urgent, just in terms of being able to service my clients. So. Hoping that anybody asks any questions about what I do or my, whatever.
When, when I have a few, just listening to your points there, you said five. Uh, clients, five hours a week. That's not a group thing. That's an individual thing?
Yeah, usually it's an individual thing, private lessons at my home. Occasionally, I'll have a group, playgroup, maybe one or two a week for an hour. Um, and that would consist of owners and their dogs because part of my program is to educate the dog owners. So each person would have their dog and we would be working on appropriate play and training, obedience training. But that's really maybe a total of two hours a week.
And this activity at your, your property, is it indoors, outdoors, in a fenced yard, in a barn?
Yeah, so I have a fenced in area that used to be a garden. Um, and I, and I generally, I use that space, actually, I completely use that space. So it's about a four-foot high fence and. Chain link, black epoxy fence. And all that's in there is just some grass and some mud. But. It's outside, if that question is outside.
Anybody else on the board have questions of Leslie?
Um.
I do.
Leslie, Brian is thinking. Leslie, what is your question?
Oh, um, I was wondering about the hours and. You said that there won't be any barking, but I know what dogs are like when you get more than one.
Well, the situation is that these are educational playgroups. So if any of my dogs have a barking problem, I'm working with them. So. At their home lesson, I would work on barking. So generally, it does, it may happen a very little bit, but. Dogs aren't being left by their owners. They're with them. So it's a very controlled situation. Um, and, you know, it varies, but it's not a daycare. Nobody drops their dogs off where it's a daycare and that kind of situation. Um, it's exclusively for educational and training purposes.
And what hours?
Oh, yes, the hours, um, it generally work from like 9:30 until maybe 2:00 o'clock, but. That doesn't mean that I'll be in there from that for those hours. It just might mean that I have a lesson. In that, in the space, maybe one lesson, you know, it depends. I go from person to person based on what they're able to do and what they need. But I said, I want to be totally honest is that it's increasing, it's going to need to increase because the number that I originally put out there. Just because of my situation and my need. And that'll obviously change. Hopefully, better. I mean, the other thing I just wanted to mention briefly is that I'm also going to use the space, I'm a volunteer puppy raiser for Canine Companions for Independence and. We train service dogs of people with disabilities. So about once a month, I'll have a group class there of the service puppies that are in training.
And how, how many dogs is that?
Um. Maybe, you know, we don't have a big, a big group up here, unfortunately. So, and that would be, like I said, the, the class is runs about an hour and a half. And it would be like every other week, but I also do field trips. So realistically, it will be once a month.
Brad, you had your hand up.
Yes, I do have a question about the number of dogs, like you've said. So how many dogs would you be having at one time that are three months of age or older?
Three months of age or older. Um, it depends on the group. So if it's a, if it's a puppy playgroup, they would be anywhere from 10 weeks to four months. Um, and otherwise, it would be private lessons and those private lessons really vary. I mostly service puppy owners, but. There are also people that have adult dogs.
Okay, the reason I ask that question is, um, the definition of a kennel is three or more dogs of three months. Of age or older. So, um, is that, are you applying to have a kennel? Because it's, because that's what, that's what the definition of a kennel is. And if it's for training purposes, it still falls under, under the kennel. Look on the definitions in our protective zoning bylaw.
Well, I do not board dogs and I do not house dogs for daycare, like, you know, all day long, that kind of thing. Exclusively just for an hour here or there, but only classes with the owner. So. I want to stress this is not a boarding situation. I have no interest in boarding. It's exclusively mostly for private lessons.
Okay, well, a kennel, in this definition, doesn't talk about boarding. That's one of the criteria. I mean, one of them is boarding is one of the examples. But a group of dogs of three or more that are of three months older, older, together. For training is one of the things, it defines it as a kennel. I'm just wondering if we're going to be able to keep it under three.
Yeah, um, so I'm a little confused, I guess, about the term kennel because.
I am too.
I think of a kennel where we bore dogs, you know. You know, so it's a little, I understand what you're saying according to what it says, but. That realistically in terms of housing dogs or anything like that, no, no interest. I'm not doing that. I'm a dog trainer.
Mr. Chair, perhaps I can offer some clarification?
Sure, go for it, Bill.
Uh, so kennel, Brad is correct in the definition of kennel. But then it was broken down into private kennel and commercial kennel. Uh, first of all, I don't know, I didn't, I lost track of these were assistance dogs that would be in the puppy playgroup. They are or no not?
Uh, yes, if, if I have my service dogs that come, but then occasionally I'll have a group of my, my private students come.
Okay, so with the three dog minimum, assistance dogs are not counted against the cumulative. Uh, but a kennel, um, is a specific use and it, it, a commercial kennel. Is boarding of, of. Boarding of dogs. Now, there's a question we had in the past with veterinary, I think, I don't know if, if it was this board or the planning board, I can't remember. But we're veterinary office, you know, was, was. Going to hold a dog overnight occasionally for. Oops, for whatever veterinarians do to dog. Um, so I think, Brad, that, that's an excellent point. It might be something to be cleaned up that we could always do and, and as you know, we're working on this quite a bit. Um, but I, I think in this case. It's, 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 it would fall as the building commissioner's determined as a, uh, home occupation.
If we go to section 76 where they talk about kennels. It says the board of appeals may grant a special permit allowing a private kennel. And so simply by including that as part of this training thing. For the service dogs, we're covered regardless of which way it goes.
Well.
Yes, Leslie.
Um, I mean, I certainly understand Leslie's. Reserve about that term because when I think of kennel, I think of boarding. So if you, if we were to grant it. And that made some other members of the board uncomfortable, we can certainly put restrictions on it so that it. The, even if it fits the definition of a kennel, we can say, but no overnight boarding. I think it's a ridiculous term, frankly, but it's a here nor there.
Thank you.
Hey, well, thank you for clarifying that. Now, there was another hand. Was that you, Paige?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question. I think you mentioned there may be up to five, I forgot if you said five people or five dogs. I think it was five dogs at any time. Um, do you have enough space on your lot for off-street parking for all those cars or would there be on-street parking cars?
Yes, so, um, my driveway is quite long, you know, so. Occasionally, I might have a person parking on the street. But it's not even a street. If, if you guys know Pine Hill Road is, it's a dead end to the, to the water district. To the, so, um, occasionally I might have one or two people parking on the street, but generally, it's not the situation. It's also very, very quiet then. Well, except for the trucks that go by, it's a very quiet dead end street.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, one other option that may assist the board in, uh, working this out. Uh, the board can. Specify a return visit from the applicant. It's just a check-in, an informal check-in at a public meeting rather than a hearing. Uh, to date, we've received, we, we didn't receive any, we haven't received complaints to date or any issues with that. And that would allow, perhaps, we could evaluate. If there is any impact, if it's appropriate, uh, with the mitigation that ZBA has. Instituted, and if not, it could be adjusted.
You just put yourself on mute, Bill.
That was my fault. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, oh, it was, I thought, I ran out of things to say. Um, the, the. No, I, I think if you come back, if, if we arrange that, uh, the applicant comes back for a visit, doesn't have to be a public hearing, just a public meeting, we, we post it. Uh, that way we can evaluate if there have been any unintended impacts to the surrounding area. We will hear about it, I'm sure. And if there, there may be some. Some. Adjustments that applicant Leslie may want to make as well. And, um, so that's a possibility too, the board could consider to help them.
All right, so.
Reach a decision.
That's a good suggestion. We'll take it under consideration. So as we move this along, the question is, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor of this application?
Just remember, if you have to use your little hands. If you want to speak and I can unmute.
Is there anybody that wants to speak in opposition to this application? Susan. Please state your name and address. After we figure out how to unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, um, my name is Susan Purington. And I live at five Pine Hill Road in Maynard and I just wanted to voice my opinion that I am totally in support for this business. Um, and I just want, hopefully can encourage everyone to vote. For her to be able to do her business at her property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Well, Susan, if you could take, there you go. That little hand thing went away. Good. So, anybody else? So. Board members, any thoughts? Paige, Leslie, go ahead, Leslie.
Oh, well, um. I think that as part of, if we grant, uh, that we need to state specific hours and. A cap on how many dogs at a time. Those types of things I think need to be spelled out.
You want to spell them out?
As well as will we be granting for a year, um, or, you know, what the time period for granting is.
So why, why don't you suggest some numbers?
All right, well, I would suggest that, um, we initially grant for a year. That way, if any. Neighbors have complaints. It'll be easier to, to adjust, make adjustments. Um. Oh.
She had said 9:30 to 2:00 PM was her typical activity time. You want to go with those numbers?
Well. Uh, I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't grant until, let's say, 5:00 o'clock because. Maybe she's going to have a client who works particular hours and can't come. Um. I mean, if she only wants until 2:00 o'clock, fine, but, you know, I'm.
No, 5:00 o'clock sounds reasonable because there are different things that come up.
Yeah.
And so number of dogs, do we need to limit the number of dogs? And if so, how much? Or do we want to just acknowledge that? This is what she's doing and if it's a kennel, we so, we thereby call it a kennel as well?
Well, uh, if we call it a kennel, then we need to say no overnight boarding. I think in the popular interpretation of the word kennel suggests that, and just to clarify it.
I think that we should probably limit the, the total number of older dogs.
Yeah.
To, to a number, whether it's, I mean, if it's, if it's three, then it does make it a kennel. By definition. But if two is, is not enough in terms of having, if that's going to impact your ability to run classes.
Um.
So to say, to say six or eight or something like that seems to be six or eight mature dogs. Um, I don't know how you can stop that many dogs together from barking.
So why don't we?
Like four?
Why, why don't we pause for a moment and ask the applicant what her maximum number of dogs is that she would typically have on site?
Sure, thank you. So, um, uh, the max I would have for a group class. Be five, I don't, I think, enough for more than five. Um, but once again, that's rare and it's in and of itself. Um, the service dogs, as someone, as someone had suggested, and I appreciate that with the ADA. That is not really an issue, but ultimately, it's not going to be that many anyway, so.
So on the five dogs in the group class, what is the duration that they would be on your property?
One hour.
One hour?
One hour, once a week. I'm really talking about maybe, except for the, except the, the exception of my physical situation right now.
Sure.
In general, um, it would be maybe a total of five hours a week of private lessons, if, if that much. Um, so it'll be one, it'll be five hours completely and then maybe one or two hours of playgroups.
Okay, I heard one hour, once a week, and then I heard a couple hours of playgroups.
Yes.
Is that, is that the same thing?
I'm sorry, no, no, no. What I said was, um, okay, let's see, so total, maximum of five dogs. That's, that's all I want in there. Um, and that would be, um, depending on how many classes I have, the max would be. Maybe two classes a week like that of five dog, dogs maximum. Um, playgroups would maybe be another two hours with a total maximum of five dogs. Um, and then there's my service dog group.
Okay, so we've got a couple, three different combinations of multiple dogs on site at the same time. So can we simplify that to say a maximum of five dogs for? I don't know, an hour at per event? And you might have, how many of these events per week? All the different combinations you're talking about?
So totally, you want the playgroups and the classes and the privates?
Yes.
I would say, um, let's see. It'll be a total. It's so hard to say, but like, it's the tops, it would be, are like eight hours a week. Well, it'll be a total, ah, it's so hard to say, but like, it's, the tops it would be are like eight hours a week.
So you would have eight hours where you would have multiple dogs on site at the same time?
No, because some of those are private lessons and it's one dog.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm looking for the multiple dogs. How, how many hours per week of multiple dogs?
Yes, so maximum will be four hours a week, and that would be either a group class or the playgroup. So that covers both of those.
All right, and so that's four one-hour events.
Um, yes, yes.
Okay.
And four hours of, of individual?
Um, at this point, it's maybe like six hours just because of this, but once I'm able to move again, um, I generally go to people's homes.
Okay.
Really, it's, there's like a very kind of temporary, kind of temporary, because it's not going to expand. It's just going to get less.
Okay. Oh, God, the sun.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can I clarify? I'm just trying to keep these conditions. Uh, I had two questions on the first two, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, we talked about a, a five P M, uh, stopping lessons at five P M, but I didn't hear a start. What time did the board desire for um, start?
I think we were going with the number that Leslie had, which was nine thirty.
Nine thirty, okay. And the second thing, Leslie had suggested a one-year check-in for the applicant? Or was that a new hearing in one year? In other words, do, can the applicant come to a regularly posted meeting for the one-year checkup, or do you want a whole new? Are we talking about a whole um, public hearing again?
My, my feeling would be to make it a standard rea- reapplication.
Okay.
Because that's simpler, rather than doing the other thing, because doing the other thing, what happens if you have an issue? Now you gotta reapply and all that other stuff.
Right, and then if, and then just, uh, okay, that's great. And then the board, if there's, the board can decide what the, the length would be if there's a reapproval or whatever the case is, but we'll, one year to hearing, nine thirty start, okay, and, okay, all right. I'm caught up with the dogs now, okay, sorry.
So, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
What about the, what about weekends?
Um, uh, sometimes I have weekends, but it's, I end at like twelve o'clock. So I start at nine thirty, I end at noon. Um, occasionally, I'll be, I'll have a three, it depends on the heat as well, but occasionally my service dogs come. That's, um, that comes, could, could sometimes be later in the afternoon, but definitely not the evening.
And that's on Saturday, not Sunday?
Um, yeah, we meet on Saturdays. Yeah, and that's once a month, generally. Two hours.
All right. Any other comments from board members, questions? So Bill, you've got all those conditions. You want to uh, reiterate it for us, so we can say, yeah, let's move that, whatever that is?
Yes, I, was there any, uh, the only thing I missed, or I wasn't sure, so there was, are there, are we going to try to limit the weekends to Saturdays, or is that not anything the board chooses to address this week?
I think.
Not Sundays.
No Sundays? Okay, and is there a time limit on, on Saturday?
Yeah, we should, we should limit it to, um, you said it was noon, or, or maybe in the afternoon, a little bit later.
Only the first dogs.
Maybe two.
Le- Leslie, what were you saying for the hours?
Um, um, I would say that when my service dogs come once a month, sometimes we meet at like from one to three, but I don't go into the evening. I generally, I mean, I wouldn't go past four o'clock, you know, or something like that.
You do anything in the morning on Saturday?
Um, it would just be maybe a pro, maybe like two private lessons, but once again, those might not even be here. You know, they might be at the person's house.
All right.
I want, I want to, can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. So, um, before this all happened, you know, just as like a neighborly thing, I expressed to my neighbors that if they ever hear anything in terms of barking or anything that concerns them, um, I would really appreciate them know, letting me know, because my job is to help. That's my job, you know, is to help neighbors get along with their dogs and families. So I, all by myself, went and to everybody around, I said, please, you know, if I'm, if there's any kind of a problem, I want to know so I can fix it.
Well, that, that's very nice of you. Thank you. Um, so the, the other condition, Bill, to put on your list is in group therapy of the dogs, group training, four one-hour events per week, is what she was describing.
That's correct. That's what I have, right, with a maximum of five dogs.
Correct.
Yeah, so would you, would you like me just run through them real quick, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, here's the conditions as I have them. Uh, applicant will return in one year, um, with a new hearing, and we'll just make sure everything's docky and, and, no pun intended. Uh, and, and we'll get, um, the, the board will reevaluate everything at that point, and then can, the board can and determine, uh, what the appropriate length of renewal, or what needs to be adjusted. Second condition would be that, uh, hours are going to be from nine thirty A M to five P M during the weekdays. And on Saturday, uh, from nine thirty to two P M with no Sunday, um, training. That, and then lastly, that, um, there are going to be a maximum of, of, uh, five dogs per session for, uh, four sessions a week at one hour apiece.
For the groups of dogs. Five, individ- individual dogs, I don't think we're putting any limits on that.
Right, right, mag, five, the, the, yeah, the, the ma, I have a fi, a group of five dogs, max. So the groups, individual, no, um, yeah, I think that's important to, and that's what we have.
The other thing that I heard mentioned early on is parking. You have off-street parking, is that correct?
Uh, maybe one or two cars that can't fit on my driveway.
Okay. So.
Oh, I'm sorry, you got the opposite. Yes, I have off-street parking, yes, my driveway.
So with those conditions, as Bill read them, do we have a motion? You don't have to reiterate all the numbers, just say as Bill wrote, uh, uh, read them.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah.
Jerry?
Yep, I, I moved to what Bill just read.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, and that is with, the provision is no off-street parking, or all parking has to be off-street?
Yes.
Okay, all parking will be in the driveway, the applicants, okay.
Correct. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And me too, so that's unanimous in favor.
Okay.
Right.
And so Bill, describe to her the timeline of what happens when, please.
Leslie, I, I will, um, draft up a decision, uh, in the next few days. Um, at that point, uh, we will, uh, have our chair sign it now. And, uh, we will record it with the clerk. Um, once it is recorded with the clerk, there is a nineteen-day appeal period that we, uh, have to monitor, uh, by the, um, the, uh, MGL guidelines. Uh, assuming there's no appeal, uh, you'll be ready to go, uh, on, uh, twenty days after it's reported. I will be in contact with you when I, uh, actually record the decision. So you'll have, uh, a, a good timeline of when everything's going on. Also, if you have any questions, you know how to get hold of me, and, and, um, but I think, um, the board was pretty clear in what they're going to do, so I would anticipate hearing from me before the end of the week with a, with a decision, the draft decision.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Aye.
Now, let's, let's move on to the next item on our agenda. This is also a continuation. This is from, I'll get my notes out here. This is from, again, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, to hear all persons interested in a special permit application filed by Donna Dotson and Andy Moreland, one twenty-three Summer Street, Maynard. The subject property is located in the S-one zoning district. And consistent with section three-two-five of the zoning bylaws, the petitioner is requesting a special permit allowing a trade shop use artist studio within the subject property. And as, as we had a meeting on this a month ago, uh, I just want to remind folks that this is a special permit for use of the barn that's on the property for a trade shop, special permit. Uh, last month, we heard from the app, the applicant's attorney stating the, the, the justification for the request, and the attorney also fielded several questions from the board. Since that meeting, the ZBA board members visited the site and observed the applicants using their various power tools and hand tools and the noise levels and so on and so forth. During today's meeting, we will hear from those that wish to speak in favor of the application and those wishing to speak in opposition. To manage the number of folks who might wish to speak, we will limit each speaker to two minutes. Julia will log each request to speak and then display a clock, after which, after two minutes of which, the speaker will be put back on mute, unless the, the board member has specific questions for that speaker. If the speaker wishes to speak again, he'll be placed at the end of the line. And each speaker is requested to identify themselves and their address at the beginning of their, their period of discussion. After we have heard all the comments, the board will discuss among themselves and may ask for additional information from the appell, the applicant. This could run long, and if time permits, we will draft a motion with any, uh, findings and conclusions that are relevant. This motion will be wordsmithed by, uh, Mr. Nemser, and then we will vote on it at the next meeting. But before we begin hearing comments from the public, I would like the applicant's attorney, if he has any brief comments as a result of the last meeting. And then we will have the board members comment on what they observed during the site visit. So is the applicant's attorney there? There you go.
Yes, I, I just allowed you to unmute, so you should be able to unmute yourself now.
So Paul, uh, I'm sorry, Paul, just to be clear, uh, town council Adam Cost is also attending. He is, uh, somewhere on your list there, but he is in attendance as well.
Welcome, Adam.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas, DeShane, and I do appreciate the opportunity. And as I said, it'll be very quick. I really just wanted to let the board know, or remind the board and our, our neighbors and abudders who are here tonight, that after the last meeting, we did submit um, some additional information, uh, including an applicant's statement regarding the basis for the application. We provide them a memorandum on the intensity of use proposed under this application and a history of past intensity of use. We have provided the board, as they asked, a listing of all of the materials that we, uh, my clients utilize in their studio, including, uh, print pictures of the labels, as well as the safety data sheets, um, showing that these are common materials. And lastly, I provided a copy of the Massachusetts Noise Regulations, which I understand, um, Maynard does not have its own noise regulations, but rather, uh, follows those of the state. So I wanted to provide everybody a copy of those regulations. Um, and that's it, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. I, I do hope that, um, I'll be given an opportunity to respond to some of the neighbors' comments or additional questions to the board, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, a- as I mentioned, after that meeting, uh, months ago, uh, we had arrangements to go onsite, and the applicants, uh, graciously led us in their studio area and showed us their various power tools in use. And we walked around the building, as well as within the building. And I, I, I know that everyone here, that, that's on the ZBA, were at one of the, we had two events. And so I, I attended the first one, and my observation was that if it's in the formal part of the studio, the, the noise of the handheld machines, electric machines, did not go outside the building. But the, uh, various table saw devices that were in the, the foyer part of the building or outside on the, the driveway were very noticeably loud. And so that's, that's my spin on it. Um, oh, and then the bamboo splitting in the backyard, that was also reasonably loud. So I, I don't know, Paige, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I, I think that's pretty accurate portrayal, though unfortunately I was not, I had to leave, um, at five, so I was unable to hear the bamboo splitting.
All right, Leslie?
Um, I, I agree with what you said. Um, part, I think, one issue is that a little bit of noise is not annoying. When it goes on and on, that's when it's annoying. And so even though like the bamboo's splitting, I didn't, I didn't find it particularly loud, but if it were to go on all day or for, you know, for a long period of time, and you were a neighbor, it would be annoying.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brad, any comments?
Um, yes, um, I did notice that it's very hot in the summertime. And days that we were there, especially, it was hot. So they had, um, windows open uh, in the studio area and with fans in there. So if you're running power tools and your windows are open, you've sort of lost the, um, insulating ability, noise insulation ability, um, that they've gone to such trouble to try to isolate the noise. So I don't see how well the noise abatement is going to work in the summertime based on the, the, that they have now with, uh, with the windows open and flowing.
All right, thank you. Jerry?
Yes, thank you, Paul. Um, can I take a couple of minutes and talk to the, uh, readings we took, or?
Sure.
That's not appropriate. That's okay.
I, I believe it's okay. You, you brought the, uh, sound meter to understand what you heard.
Ex- exactly. The, the last meeting we had a month ago, I heard a lot of, lot of back and forth, but I did not hear any specific data uh, being discussed. And since I am a, a licensed safety engineer, and I do OSHA sound and noise surveys uh, for manufacturing and for power plants, I thought, I've got the equipment, could I go out and gather some data for my own personal edification and to share with anybody who would be interested? So let me give a, just a, a quick thing to get everybody somewhat up to speed on noise. So one, the level of noise will certainly vary with each person, depending upon their, their level of hearing acuity. Uh, weather, wind, temperature, relative humidity, sound travels at different rates of speed, and the impact will be different on each of us. So a couple of things, and I, I know most people don't really fully, unless you're in the business, don't understand noise or what the levels are that we normally hear. So for example, a normal conversation or background music would be about sixty decibels, six zero. Office noise or inside of a car of sixty miles an hour on a highway, seventy decibels. Average home noise inside your house, just sitting quietly, runs around thirty-five to forty decibels. So with that stated, let me read down some, some numbers. So you have a a, a, a little data to, to think about. Tip the light so I can see the numbers. Okay, so the initial survey, so the, the hardest problem at that location is traffic noise on the roadway. At that location is traffic noise on the roadway. So each time I would take readings, I would have to wait for cars to stop going by, so I get the true impact. Of whatever tool was being used at that time. So when traffic going by on one day, traffic noise was about seventy-seven decibels. The next time we went out, two days later was seventy-two decibels. So decibels are a, a, a. A measurement of, like an inch or a yard or a foot for measuring sound. So understanding that when it's quiet and there were no cars going by, you're around forty-eight decibels, forty-five decibels. Cars going by seventy-seven or seventy-two. The seventy-seven and seventy-two varied because of the temperature difference between the two days. The wind was about the same, route of humidity was lower on the second day. So let me run down a couple of quick tools. So these tools were used inside the building, electric chainsaw. So I'm going to read you not all the readings, but the reading at the, the rear deck or porch area. Of the closest adjacent neighbor. And with running the electric chainsaw inside the studio. Was forty-two decibels one day, forty-eight the next test. A sander or a random orbit grinder, forty-five and forty-five. Decibels and thirty-nine and forty-two decibels. So I want everybody to understand too, as the attorney just mentioned a few minutes ago. The state noise standard. Is sixty decibels, six zero. So keep that in mind as we read some of these numbers down. A grinder inside the studio, forty-six decibels, forty-six decibels. Again, this is at, everyone I'm reading is at the neighbor's rear porch. Shop vac, forty-seven, forty-one. Uh, radial, um. Yeah, I guess a radial arm saw, I don't know. Anyway, forty-seven decibels, forty-six. Radial arm with the window, with a side window open. And there was only one side window on that side of the building. That was at. Sixty decibels and fifty-five decibels. That was one of the higher ones. Radial arm with the door open, the door leading to the ramp, the garage door that was opened up, fifty-five decibels, fifty-five decibels. Table saw, door closed, forty-six decibels, forty-six decibels. Table saw indoors, or table saw outside. Sixty-three decibels, fifty-three decibels. Die grinder. Forty-eight decibels, forty-eight. Gas chainsaw outside behind the studio, behind the barn building. So this is outside. Each of these readings I'm going to do now are all outdoors. So with the chainsaw at the neighbor's porch, chainsaw running outside, gas chainsaw. Fifty-five decibels. And the next day that was lower road of humidity, sixty-seven decibels. In addition, there was another neighbor. That came over and introduced themselves, a name I do not remember. But they have a barn behind the neighbor's house and they have a little sitting area. And with a chainsaw that was reading seventy-one decibels at their sitting area. Bamboo splitting, so splitting the poles, forty-seven decibels, forty-eight decibels. And again, at that neighbor's back sitting area was fifty-four, five-four decibels. Bamboo splits. So this is where you're popping each of the little membranes on the bamboo, forty-five, forty-three. At the neighbor's back sitting area, behind the barn, fifty-two decibels. A power wash, we did a power wash only one of the days, we did not do it the first day. At the neighbors, it was fifty-two decibels. And behind the other neighbors' barn, the sitting areas, fifty-nine decibels. So there were, in my estimation. From a noise ordinance standpoint, with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Everything was below sixty decibels, with a couple of exceptions. And those were done outside the, the barn. But they were more of a nuisance, nuisance level. Than a particular violation, because they don't go on for hours on end. That's it.
Well, thank you. Board members, any questions on his, his measurements, any comments?
Yeah, Jerry, what was the, can you run through the, the ordinance again about? There was something that I was reading in there that said something about, there's a change in ten dB.
Yes. I, I can, I can. And there is a change in ten dB, but there's a, there's a clarifying point to that. So the noise source would be considered to be violating the Department's Noise Regulation, three-ten CMR seven dot ten. If the noise source, number one, increases the broadband, which is the sound. Level by more than ten dB, okay? So you are correct. Number two, produce a pure tone, which I did not notice any of those. A pure tone condition is. Anybody who's had a hearing test in a sound booth, they give you a certain beat, but a certain pitch, that's a pure tone. It's, it's not like music, it's like a, a tuning fork, one pitch. Nothing else. Nothing that I heard delivered a pure tone. So these criteria are measured both at the property line, at the nearest inhabited residence. Ambient is defined as the background weighted sound level. That has exceeded ninety percent of the time. So the key here is ninety percent of the time. These sound levels are not ninety percent of the time, they are intermittent. You know, they may be using the chainsaw maybe twenty minutes, maybe thirty minutes. I, I don't honestly know. We can certainly ask that question. But the key here is, is exceeding. It, it, so it's going to happen for many hours is what the, what the noise ordinance do. When we do it for power plants, there has to be at the fence line of the power plant has to be sixty decibels. That doesn't mean that there aren't functions that go on in that power plant that don't greatly exceed that. There are, and they do. But they're intermittent. And that is exactly what these noises are here. They're intermittent, not steady for ninety percent of the time. So I, I did not see a noise ordinance violation, not in my view.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one more follow-up. So how many of those, of the things that you tested that sounds? Did have a ten dB or more. Increase over the background noise.
Over ambient, hold on one second. Two inside. And they were just barely over ten and.
Outside?
The, the outside, uh, one, all of them, well, no, not all of them. Bamboo pole splitting, no. Chainsaw, yes. Pole splits, no either. No, just a power washer and the chainsaw outside. Splitting of the bamboo poles and the splits did not exceed.
So the table saw outside didn't do anything. I mean, didn't, didn't make that. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions from board members, please?
And again, just real, real quick, just one, one clarifying thing. If, if somebody were to listen to the same function happen on January seventh. It's twelve degrees out and a light northwest wind. The ground is frozen, no leaves on the ground, the sound level will be registered higher. It, it, so weather is a factor, humidity and temperature are factors, that's all.
So, Leslie, go ahead.
Oh, so again, Jerry, there were two things. Were, were there two things that exceeded the sixty dB?
Yes, that was the chainsaw outside and the power washer outside, out behind the building, yes.
They both reached seventy?
One second, chainsaw. Chainsaw was, no, only fifty-five at the neighbor's, sixty-seven, six-seven. On the second day, and then seventy-one at the other neighbor's back sitting area.
So. I, I think there's a miss, like, people who don't know about acoustics probably don't realize that an. Increase of ten dB is actually. Means that the intensity has actually doubled, not like just gone up ten.
Right.
So that means that the sound. Is now twice as loud as the allowable level.
Correct. Correct, but keeping in mind. A truck going by or a motorcycle going by will register in the nineties to a hundred and ten. Just, just to put it in perspective of noises people may run into on a day-to-day basis. And, and, and these aren't constant.
Yeah, so I, again, I think it's down a lot to duration.
Yes, yes.
Paige.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jerry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think you mentioned there are two in seed that were also ten over ambient. Do you mind, were, were those measurements taken with windows open or were the windows closed during those two exceedances?
Two exceedances, what things we had indoors?
Inside, I may have written my notes, I may have misheard, but that's what my notes.
Exceedance over ambient is what you're talking about. Okay, so ambient was forty-eight and forty-five, so over forty-five. We had one, which is a radial arm saw, which is fifty-five point seven, so that was, you know, roughly eleven dB. The forty-five, we had table saw outside. Were sixty-three, so it was forty-five to sixty-three. That was an increase, absolutely. Then we go to outside.
Okay, so was the window open during those measurements or is the window shut?
So one, was the table saw was outside on the ramp.
Okay.
So window open, the clothes didn't matter, it was sitting physically outside. One was with the window open. Which was the, what was it, fifty-five point seven.
That's helpful, thank you.
Any other questions? Or have we covered sound deafeningly? Good, so the next. Phase of this meeting, I want to hear first from folks that want to speak. In favor of this special permit for using the barn. As a trade shop for constructing or art, artistic work or whatever it is they do in it. And so Julia will. Control this because I don't know, we've, we've got, according to my notes, fifty-one people on this meeting. And I want to keep it under control. So Julie will set up the clock and we'll have the two-minute. Event, right, Julia?
Yes, so first I just, I'm going to just mute, mute everyone and then unmute Paul. And Adam, I'll keep you unmuted as well. And then if you want to just raise your, your virtual hand. And when Paul calls on your name, I'll, I'll tell the, the computer that you can get unmuted. Then you just can go and unmute yourself. And we are going to share the. Timer. So let me just mute everyone first, one thing at a time. Okay, and now. You should. Be able to see a timer on your screen. Everyone's nodding, I think everyone can see it, great.
Now, what I'm looking for is anybody that wants to speak in favor of this application. And I can only see two or three people on a little side screen of pictures. And so.
Anyone, yeah.
That's up to you then. And just as a reminder, that there was a whole bunch of written notes. That people have sent in, those are on the record. I don't want to reiterate all of those, we'll be here till midnight, just reading them to the, to the record physically, so they're there. We know that, we've read them. And so if anybody wants to speak in addition to that. Or has not submitted something in writing and wants to just talk it through, that's great. So.
We have one person, two people, three. Okay, so we'll just start, the first person's name is Priscilla, can I unmute?
That's, that's fine. And remember to state your name and address.
Okay, so I'm going to unmute you and then I'll press start, okay? Once you get unmuted, that's when I'll, I'll start the timer.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Cotter, Tudriscoll Ave. I've lived in Maynard for close to thirty years. And I really just want to say I support. The special permit for Donna and Andy's studio. I think anything we can do to support them is really important for. The town of Maynard and the art community. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Julia, who's next?
Next is Jenna Darji. I hope I said your name right. I'm going to ask her to unmute. I'll reset my clock.
Hi, Jenna Darji, thirty-three, Crane Ave. I've been a resident of Maynard for a little over a year. And a big part of what drew me to the town was the sense that I got of the town's support of arts and culture. We are a cultural district, we are unique in the region for the variety of artistic and cultural offerings we have. And I believe that we should support artists remaining in town, as that will uphold that which makes us stand out. And it will not only lead to cultural benefits, but also economic, economic benefits for the town by. Drawing in visitors and the dollars that they can bring to town businesses. And to me, the data presented is definitively supportive of approving this measure. None of the measurements exceeded the regular constant road noise that exists, so. I, I don't see an issue as long as, you know, there are reasonable accommodations made in terms of the length of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put your hand down. And. Um, next is. Dyk Dskis. I'm just going to unmute you and.
Name, name and address, please.
Sure. I'm Derek Sykes. I live at one oh seven Summers Street and I've been at. This address for about six years, six and a half years, and I'm in favor of the permit. Just in general, I'm, I'm an engineering manager and I work a lot with building codes and safety inspections and that sort of thing. And I tend to work at home a lot. And so I take the dog by the, the property a bunch of times a day. So I can tell you what I observe. And. You know, what I, what I observe when I walk by the property is that the, the property is very well maintained. I've never seen an issue with, with trash on the property. I've never seen an issue with blocking traffic. I've never seen an issue with the, the studio or generating any real noise. So I, I go by at the property line. I never really hear anything, I hardly know that they're there. I only see a couple of cars there, so I've never seen them. As I said, block traffic or block the sidewalk or what have you. And overall, the property is very well maintained. And in particular, the studio is very well, well-maintained, it's better than a lot of the sheds that I've seen in the area. So just in general, no noise, no odors, no chemicals, anything like that. As I, I walked by multiple times a day and on the weekends, so I can just kind of talk to the frequency of things that I've heard and seen there. Just in general, again, I'm very much in favor of the permit. They're very good neighbors. And then in general, they really bring a positive contribution to the neighborhood and. You know, I like to see the sculptures and the art that they do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Gabby Z. So let me. Unmute you, and if you could just give me a minute before, I just need to reset my clock, okay? unmute you. And if you could just give me a minute before I just need to reset my clock. Okay, you may start.
Hello, this is actually Gabriella and Lucas Shin. We um, resided at one twenty-seven Summer Street um, from two thousand and fourteen until July of last year. Donna and Andy, we are in favor of this and Donna and Andy were very considerate through the years. We, we lived as neighbors. Um, we did not find, we found they contributed to the fantastic fact that it's Maynard. Um, we never had any, you know, occasional saws, but nothing really louder than somebody mowing their lawn, to be honest with you. Um, Gabby, you want to think that?
Yeah. So I think uh, we are totally in support of this. And while we still, we're not neighbors in, in the street. Um, we believe that they have really worked with the community in Maynard, not only for, you know, their, their interests, but really for the greater good. Um, in, in really beyond that, they have been outstanding neighbors. Friendly people. They really care about the whereabouts. And, and then again, we never being bothered by any chemical smell or any particular noise that would be disruptive. Like I said, no louder than any of us working our lawns. So hopefully, uh, the town, you know, approves them and gives them the permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm just going to let someone else in. Let me move your hand, Gabby. Um, next is going to be Susan Erickson. Susan, I'm going to unmute you and reset my clock.
All right. So my name is Susan Erickson. I'm at seventy-six Concord Street. I've lived here for eight years. Uh, Maynard passed a master plan in twenty-twenty that has a several things that would support this permit going forward. Uh, master plan goal, NCH two states support the growth of Maynard's creative cultural and advance the identity of Maynard as a cultural destination. And a sub-goal under that, NCH three dash two states in coordination with art space and similar partners continue to support existing as well as expand artist lofts and live work studios. So uh, I just want to voice my support for this um, permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. You too. Okay. Next will be um, Sally. Going to ask you to unmute. Okay. Sorry, just one second. There you go. Okay, now you can go.
Hi, so I'm Sally Bubier. I live at thirty-three Butler Ave. I've lived in Maynard for uh, forty-one years and Maynard is no longer um, can no longer rely on, you know, digital and it's no longer a mill town for its economic viability. And in fact, as previous speakers have stated, we are now actively through our master plan and the cultural district, trying to rebrand ourselves as an art destination, art and culture destination. And we are in fact, just that. When I asked friends from out of town, you know, they love Maynard for its, its arts and culture. People who recently moved to town, they moved because of the art spot. That's, that's what is drawing people to Maynard. So I, I am in support of this application to really um, you know, to continue to enhance Maynard as an art and culture destination. And furthermore, I mean, Andy and Donna have been really active members of our, of our community. They have served on town boards. Um, and uh, you know, I just, you know, they're wonderful citizens and uh, I am in support of them staying here and, and making a living in our little town. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Mal Cor. I hope I said your name right. I apologize to everyone. If I'm not saying your name right. Okay. Let me just, okay, now.
Hi, um, I am a resident scholar at the Brandeis University's Women's Studies Research Center along with um, Donna Dodson. And so I, I just wanted to, to chime in um, and say something about the importance of the art. I mean, I realize that that might not be the focus in this context, but both uh, Donna and I have been awarded Fulbright grants um, in, in order to engage the work that we're doing. Um, and, and her work really does have an international scope. Um, and, and attracts people across, you know, geographic boundaries, social, cultural boundaries, and it's really quite transformative. I mean, I've had an opportunity to be a discussant on some of her art and to be, you know, to be involved in discussions where audience members are talking about how the art is changing, how they think about the world and social and cultural issues. And so I just think that in any context, you, you know, you often look at the benefits um, uh, alongside, you know, the, you know, inconveniences of a thing. And I, and I think that what hasn't um, been discussed here is really the tremendous impact of the art being produced in this context. And I, and I think that that really can't be overstated. And so um, I hope that, that people who, who haven't engaged the art or don't, aren't aware of of how many people, again, across countries are impacted, will consider that um, when they think about the importance of, again, um, the, the artwork being produced in this context. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Well, one question before we go. I need your address.
So I'm in actually in, I'm not, I don't, I'm not a resident of Maynard.
But you do have
Auburn, Massachusetts. Yes.
You, you do live someplace.
I'm in Auburn, Massachusetts. I'm at one nineteen Rockland Road.
In Auburn, you said.
That's right.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, next um, up is Lindy. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself.
Hey. Uh, hi, I'm Lindy Gier. I live at twenty-eight McKinley Street in Maynard and I'm here in support of um, of the proposal. I have known Donna and Andy for several years now and I, I believe that they bring such good um, press, news releases, advertising of Maynard and where we want to go with, with the arts. And um, it definitely is part of our master plan as um, as previous people have stated. And so I think that we need to um, put our actions behind the words that are on paper in that master plan. And then also I've been over at their house several times. They are very, um, they're very gracious. The parking, they always make sure that we're parked away from the sidewalks, well into their yard. Um, and that says just a visitor. So I, I just wanted to let people know that they're very respectful. Um, and in closing, I, I would just say they also give back to the community. Donna has put in numerous hours on the Affordable Housing Commission. She worked on the efforts to figure out what to do with Coolidge School. Both have been multi-year efforts and I know that Andy is equally as involved in the cultural council. And I just don't want to see people like them driven out of our town. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that's for um, all I have for uh, in favor.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Oh, we have one more.
Oh, my goodness.
We have a few more. Okay. Um, so Greg, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. I'm a second to, there you are. Okay. Hello?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Greg Bokus. Uh, I live at sixteen Florida Road and I've lived here since, I believe, two thousand and seven. Um, I just wanted to uh, speak in favor of granting uh, Andy and Donna the special permit. Um, I was actually surprised when I was reading through the, the town bylaws, municipal zoning, that artist studios were not included. Uh, mainly because of uh, some, all of the efforts that have been really kind of undertaken uh, to really try to make that easier for artists uh, and to build culture in the town. Um, I think that's really about it. I, I, I was just very surprised that, that they had to go through all of this just to, to continue what they're doing.
Thank you.
Your hands. Next up is Tracy Price. Mute you.
Hi. Oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Tracy Price. I live at twenty-two Chandler Street. I've been here uh, eight years. And I, I am one of the people who moved to Maynard because of the arts community and the movie theater and just it looked like a cool place to live. Um, I've known Donna for about twenty years. I've uh, I'm acquainted with her through the arts community and Make-A-Plane where she used to live and where she pretty much got chased out by pricing and I, I did too. Um, and I just want to say that um, knowing her, she's one of the friendliest, politest, most accommodating people. And if um, if neighbors were having a problem with her, she, that's never something she would brush off. She would, um, with this new um, decimal reading stuff that you have, I think that they would be even more concerned. Maybe they didn't have those measurements before. Now they concentrate more on closing windows and they're very accommodating. And um, so I, I think that that she would be even a better neighbor now with these, this zoning meeting and the measurements. And also just, yeah, the importance of arts and I just don't want to see artists chase out of town. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor at this time? Going once? Going twice? Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition?
Oh, uh, sorry. We, we have a few more people hopping up.
Did we get mixed up? Are, are these in favor?
Could we just, just if you're, if you're in opposition, just put your hand up just for one second. We just want to make sure that we're able to get um, everyone. Uh, Lynn, Linda's iPad is having trouble with her um, her hand. So let me see if I can try to find you, Linda. Okay, um, Linda's iPad. If you are there, I, I did unmute you. So you should be able to, to speak.
Um, my name is Linda Kaskinen. I live at one twenty-nine Summer Street and I have lived here for fifty-four years. Donna and Andy are wonderful neighbors. They're wonderful citizens. They're wonderful artists. We need to encourage and, and, and support these artists who live and work here. And I truly hope you vote to get, grant them this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Now are we all set? Is there anyone else willing to make comments in favor of this application? All right. So let's go for those that wish to speak in a, in opposition to this application. And reminding folks again that this is an application for use of a barn building as an accessory use as a trade shop for their artist activities. It's the building itself. So uh, go ahead, Julia.
Okay, so we'll start. Daniel Hill, I'm going to unmute you now.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is actually Dennis Murphy from Hill Law. And I'm speaking on behalf of a number of the abutters. So with the chair's indulgence, I'd like to have a little bit more than two minutes. I did attend the entire last hearing and it was uh, taken up by the other attorney. So uh, if I could just have a little extra time, I do have a short presentation.
This is dealing with the use of the building as a a trade shop for their special permit? Is that what this is about?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I did submit a letter to the board a month ago. Um, so I'll just launch right in. So the reason we have zoning is so that we can allocate areas where certain uses are allowed. And that gives a certain expectation about what neighbors and others in that district uh, should be prepared for. And this is a it, it's been suggested, I think, a false dichotomy between uh, those who want to create art and those who think that uh, those expectations ought not be upset. So uh, I wanted to make just a couple of legal points. Uh, you have your own town council here, who I know well and who also knows me. Uh, he'll advise you on the law. Uh, but the first point that I think is worth keeping in mind um, is that in this instance, the building inspector has issued an enforcement order and that has certain legal ramifications. Uh, that order found that the owners were using the premises contrary to zoning for commercial purposes in a residential district. That order could have been appealed to you and uh, if need be, beyond that to court, uh, but wasn't and is therefore final. And I think you're bound by it. Uh, and so one concern I have is that any permit you might
So your time is up. Before you keep going, uh, Mr. Chair, would you like to give them more time?
He's, yes. Attorney Hill, um, what we're dealing with here is a special permit. And I haven't heard anything against or for the special permit. I, I don't want to rehash the history. We're looking at a special permit application. And this is for use of that building for a trade shop.
If you'd just allow me a little while longer, I, I will uh, be very clear about that. The, the second point is that it doesn't qualify for a
Just so Paul, are you giving him more time or for me?
Yeah, let's give him another two minutes. He said it'll come really clear in a minute. So let's give him two minutes and see what he's got.
There you go.
They don't qualify for a trade shop. A trade shop is delineated in your bylaw. Kennel's hairdresser. Uh, another speaker just said it's a shame that artist studios are not mentioned in the zoning bylaw. Even if you were to give them a special permit, it's not authorizing the use that they've clearly asked for. They're asking for a use that's not allowed. What they want is a variance. They should apply for one. Alternatively, they could get a zone change. Another possibility is if they're really the victims of their own success, they could rent a studio in an appropriately zoned district and do whatever they wish if it were an industrial district or a commercial district. The main issue that you focused on is the balancing test for special permit. I don't believe they qualify for the reasons I've said, because they need a variance, because they're not a trade shop. But let me address in the minute I have remaining, why they don't qualify even under the special permit criteria. You would have to find that the benefit to the neighbors, I'm sorry, the benefit outweighs any detriment to the neighbors. This, I believe, must be a rare case. It certainly was when I sat on my zoning board where two different neighbors hired two different attorneys to oppose this project. So I hope you'll hear from the attorneys. Uh, I hope that you will uh, consider the effect on the neighborhood. And uh, any special permit that you might issue, I'm, I'm afraid is going to be misread as license to continue behavior and activities that the building inspector found were unlawful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you go, I have one question that goes back to what you stated at the beginning. You said you are representing a group of people. Who are those people and where do they live?
Uh, Bill and Amy Schuh are at uh, one nineteen Summer Street. Uh, it may be one fifteen and Angeline Bosfort, uh, who is also on the call tonight and uh, she is also a neighbor, although not a direct abutter. And she can tell you her address. I don't know it off the top of my head, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So it's those two, those two groups of people.
Yes, sir. There, there is another direct abutter with separate counsel who I believe is also on the call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want me to unmute Angeline to get her address now or? Do you like to wait?
Uh, we might have that. I'm not sure. We might have that. I'm not sure. She wrote in before. But if she's on, she can give her address.
Angeline, I just unmuted you. Could you give your address?
Yeah, I'm at 125 Summer Street and I am a direct abutter.
125 Summer. Great. Thank you. Okay. So let me reset my clock. Next is Keith Bilden. Lower your hands. Okay, are you unmuted? No.
Are you still there? I don't see him anymore.
He is. I put are you unmuted?
I am unmuted.
Oh, weird. It's saying that you're still muted. Okay, well, sorry about that. We'll start your clocks.
So we got your name. What's your address, please?
1 Federal Street, Boston.
Oh, an outsider. Are you representing some local?
I'm representing Yvette, Tardif and Michael Hart. So this application should be denied for two reasons. First, the applicant's use does not qualify as a trade shop as defined under section 3.2.5, which is allowed by a special permit under S1 district. Rather, it is a live-work dwelling unit as defined under section 11, which is not allowed in an S1 district. The applicants have submitted today a very detailed and evidence-based letter that shows the difference between the trade shop and what is actually being done on the applicant's property, which incorporates in significant extent their home. And I'll let that letter stand for that proposition. What I want to focus is on is even if you do treat it as a trade shop, it does not qualify under the requirements for a special permit or the qualifications for an accessory use under 3.2.1. Under 3.2.1, it is required that the use as an accessory use must not be detrimental to the community and not change the outward character of the district. So irrespective of the balancing test, that's what must be met under a special permit. So for a special permit, under the first criteria, social and economic and community needs, the desire to have art in the community can be satisfied within the zoning district. The fact that many applicants like art, I mean, many of the people and the supporters like art and wrote letters in support do not suffice to grant the special permit. Also, the fact that they donate time to the town does not meet the criteria. Mr. Chairman, may I have another minute, given that I'm counsel representing the the direct abutters with a presumption of standing and that the applicants had an hour and a half?
Well, what I'm trying to understand here is the pros and cons of them using a barn on their property for activities as like a trade shop. And you're trying to tell me that it is not a trade shop, even though it's an activity that in my mind fits the definition of a trade shop. And I have not heard anything yet from you that would support that it is not going to be nice to the neighborhood, to use the simple words.
But, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, as I mentioned, the Yvette Tardif and Michael Hart submitted a letter today that gives ample evidence and I was going to have that rely as far as the evidence. And I suggest that the members need to review that letter and see the ample evidence to show that it does not qualify as a trade shop. It's not an artist's studio. Studio is not mentioned within the trade shop definition and they are clearly a work, live-work space activity on the property that's incorporating their home in significant extent into the use of what they're asking for.
Well, we will have to review that letter. Coming in today makes it sort of awkward to review and comment on it intelligently at this time in the evening. So with that, I will take it under advisement that we should review that letter.
But that's what I suggest. As far as the other, I was going through the components of the
So I'm just gonna Paul, are you giving him more time? I had to mute you as well. So sorry. Hold on, Paul. Can you unmute yourself?
In going through what the attorney had suggested about some letter that we received late today, we haven't reviewed it. And so to get at that and try to understand what his argument is, we will have to call either a postponement, give everybody a chance to review it, which will take an hour or so, or we're going to have to have a continuance to another date a month from now. But the point is, I am looking for factual evidence as to why people can or cannot use a building on their property for an activity within that building. And my cursory look at a bunch of emails that came through today, I saw nothing that said anything about activities within the building that would be useful or not as a trade shop. And so with that, I would ask, is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition?
Okay, so we have a few more people. Michael Hart is the next one.
Go ahead, Michael. Just unmute yourself.
Hi there. I'm Michael Hart. I live at 119 Summer Street. Since I got two minutes, I'm going to try and go quick. I support art. I have an art history degree with a focus on Japanese Jomon era pottery and sculpture and wood block prints from future times. This has been characterized as a neighborly squabble. That's all this is about. This is about the zoning ordinances that are laid out. There are artist business offices that are supposed to be in a business zone. They're not allowed by special permit. There are artist studios and artist live-work space. They're not supposed to be in an S1 zone and they're not allowable by special permit. This has been what's going on at 123 Summer Street since they moved in. They have been contravening Maynard's protective zoning bylaws the entire time. We've been working with the town since 2016 to try and have some enforcement take place. You know, the demos that you got were not representative of the actual work that goes on. There are several pieces of evidence from our letters and from Bill and Amy Schuh's letters that show that they were very excited to have worked the entire July 4th holiday weekend, three-day weekend on their chainsaw sculpture. Like, and we suffered for it. We suffer constantly for it. It's not a hardship for them to not have this studio on their in their residence 12 feet from my bedroom window. It's not a hardship for them to move to art space one block down the street or move to the mill or any other commercially zoned place that's appropriate for their art manufacturing activities. They work on wood that is defined as light manufacturing in the zoning bylaws. That is not acceptable in an S1 zone, even with a special permit. It is a hardship for us and every direct abutter to their property that actually has property that borders their property is opposed to this. The noises are constant. They use hazardous materials as shown in their social media posts. We put the MSDS hazard sheets up on the letter that we submitted and we oppose this stringently.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. That was significantly clearer than the previous person. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep, so we have a few more. Bill and Amy Schuh are next on the list. So let me ask you to unmute yourself. Okay, you're two minutes.
Hi, Bill Schuh, 115 Summer Street. We've been residents of Maynard for 15 years. Chairman Schreiner and members of the board, thank you for the time granted to speak to you on this matter. This issue at hand is charged immensely with the emotion due to its longevity. But I ask you to disregard that and look closely at the facts. This is not about yesterday or the day before. This is about tomorrow and every day after. I am a private person who is speaking publicly to protect my family's future at our home. May we use the past to illuminate today and learn. The future I desire and work hard for is that of peace and safety for my family. I oppose this special permit in its entirety for what I have learned from the past and fear for the future. It has taken many years, courageous individuals and a lot of hard work to have this opportunity. I thank you again and ask that you please do your best to preserve the nature of this residential district. Any of the information that you would need would be submitted in the documents that have been posted on Board Docs.
I would also like to add, I'm Amy Schuh, also 115 Summer Street, that we've been hearing a lot about the town's master plan and the cultural district designation and our culturally economy. That's not what this is about. We're not trying to push these guys out of town. We're simply asking them to stop and to change where they're doing it. If this business was of this scale was of any other type, we feel like the board would hear, feel a little bit differently. So we just really want our family to get back to normal and be able to enjoy our home and our property. That's why we bought this house was because of the yard and we really can't enjoy it like we used to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's going to put your hand. Next, we have Yvette. Two, there you go. You're unmuted. Let me just reset the clock.
Hello, I'm Yvette. I live at 119 Summer Street. First, thank you so much for hosting this meeting. We have been working with the town since 2015 to find the right place to enforce these zoning bylaws. So your time is super precious to me and I really appreciate your expertise. I'm also an artist. I've worked with the printmaking studio at Maynard Art Space successfully. And there's, there's no reason to break zoning bylaws to have an artist's space in this residence. If you want to understand the impact to our life, you know, we put a lot into our letter, but you're talking about commercial vehicles at 6:30 in the morning waking you up. You're talking about sorry, I get very upset because it's ruined my life for a very long time. You get people running, speeding down your driveway and almost running over your nephew, which is completely unacceptable. There is toxic fumes, dust and materials constantly in the air outside of their building that we have to breathe in. There is light pollution. There is noises. The noises go on 12 hours a day for four days in a row, for two weeks in a row. The smells go on for weeks at a time, constantly. We have to leave our house. We have to stay inside. Like, it's hard to even quantify. This is in any way something that should be considered in this zoning meeting. The fact that Andy and Donna are laughing tells you exactly how much they take this seriously, which is zero. In no circumstance should you even consider putting this forward.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Yvette, your hand. Next is Luke. Just remember to state your full name and address.
Hello. Hi, this is Luke Sweeney. I live at 84 Rockland Ave. I've been in Maynard with my family since 2004. I oppose this special permit in its entirety. As someone who appreciates art and admires the work of various artists, as the saying goes, though, there is a time and place for everything. Clearly, at this time, their property is not zoned or qualified for this type of activity. It has negatively affected the direct abutters and I can't stress this enough because we all know how much lawyers cost. They have hired their own personal attorneys because of this and how it's affected them. While many people have spoken personally about the people, the artists and how nice they are, this is clearly not the issue. It's apparent that the town wants to be known as a cultural district, but there has to be limits with respect to the neighbors and the neighborhood. Again, I oppose this special permit. I hope down the line that we can abide by the laws that are written in the books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Elizabeth Swayze.
Okay. My name is Elizabeth Swayze and I'm at 131 Summer Street. I am not a direct abutter to the artist's property. But I feel like this permit should not be approved. I also want to go on record as saying I love having these artists and their art in our town and in our neighborhood. I enjoy seeing their sculptures every time I pass by their house. But this isn't about that. This is about using space in a residential neighborhood to run effectively a wood shop a lot of the time. And I don't, I agree with a number of people who have spoken here today that I would prefer if the artists would find somewhere else to do this heavy machinery, wood machinery work than in their yard in a residential neighborhood. This isn't about chasing artists out of town. Again, I really value their work and feel like it enriches Maynard, but I don't think it's acceptable to have, you know, a full-time woodworking machinery shop with all the things that go on along with that in a residential neighborhood on Summer Street. I also just want to say, I, you know, having witnessed the politics in the neighborhood for some years now, I don't get a sense that that the artists are, have been good neighbors. So I kind of feel like we're beyond that.
Okay, you're two minutes.
Let's move on to the next one. If Elizabeth has more to say, she can come back at the end.
Okay, next up is Angeline Bosford.
Thank you. It's Bobber. So I'm Angeline Bobber. I live at 125 Summer Street. I'm a direct abutter. And I echo a lot of the things that the other opposing abutters have said. I wanted to stress that I, I think the key reason that it seemed like you weren't getting a direct response to your question earlier, Paul, was the direct abutters think that this business has been mischaracterized, just given our experience living next to it for the last six or more years. So it's hard for us to answer a direct question about pros and cons when, you know, currently we're only seeing cons and we're not responding to a question that we think is valid. So I'm with others that, you know, big supporter of art, one of the reasons moved to Maynard. You know, we want something of this degree, this manufacturing, building, creating to be done elsewhere.
That's a very good insight. I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to make some comments in opposition?
Just go through and just see if anyone has their hand up. Okay, so we have people who already spoke in raising their hand. Would you like to give them an additional two minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to start with Michael there. He's been very patient.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the trade shop matter. They're not electricians. They're not plumbers. They're not upholsterers. They're not making furniture. They're making art. It's very specific in their curriculum vitae, in their resume and all of their website and their promotional materials and their social media. They're, they're not typical craftsmen. They're not producing pottery or dinnerware that that they are creating art objects, which is covered under the zoning laws that are not allowed in an S1. And the special permit as a craftsman is basically a way around the other zoning laws that contravene what they're trying to do. I think that you'll find with some of the evidence that we've submitted, that many of the comments that they've made through their lawyer characterizing what they do to be false. I think that they've also presented falsehoods in the fact that they said they don't do metals when there's definite, you know, you can see Donna grinding bronze sculptures in her basement, which, you know, I don't know how you can separate the barn and the living residence as two different things when they use all of it for all of their industry. I had some other points, but I know that I'm time limited. So I just, straight from the black and white zoning laws, this is not a thing that is straight from the black and white zoning laws, this is not a thing that is allowed even by special permit. And I appreciate your time. Um, I know that we submitted a little late. Um, but we were trying to get all of our ducks in a row to make sure that we were giving factual presentations. So thank you very much for the time. And I do appreciate that you're all volunteers and that we're bringing this drama into your life right now, but I, I do appreciate you taking everything into consideration and for all that you do for the town of Maynard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. That was a very nice comment.
Mr. Chair, Bill Memzer, may I speak, Planning Director?
Uh, I, I don't know. Bill, do you want to speak, really?
Well, not really, but it's just to be social. I think we have to clear, we, we have to be careful. We're going, the, the, the board has been exceptionally lenient, allowing first the town, the applicant's council to speak, then allowing individuals represented by the council to speak, which is fine. But we have to be sure that we stay on track of what we're, what this board is examining, what's before it. And what's before it is, does this application meet the criteria to grant a special permit as a trade shop? We have the Building Commissioner's interpretation. It has been posted as, on the C-Cidicist, um, uh, letter that is on Board docs, has been around since, uh, January or February of this year. Um, we have definitions, uh, that people disagree with. And, uh, we can, we can go on each of the definitions, but I think we're getting, we're getting the board off track. And that was one thing that I think that the board, uh, wanted to avoid at all costs. And, uh, I just want to put that out there. We, we are, to be clear, whether somebody disagrees with the definitions or not, that's, that's a different argument. A live work is, just to be clear, we've heard the live work, um, definition is contained in the zoning bylaws. We've heard it a lot about it tonight, but we know that if you look at the definition, it also says that the residential use is secondary in a live work. Now, that, if that's a, if that's an argument that we want to have, this is something for the, the Building Commissioner or the zoning administrator to discuss. But this is, I, I, I feel, uh, it's incumbent on staff to keep the board on task somewhat. As we said, you're volunteers and I would caution the board at, uh, getting too far off track from what the task is. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I, I see a couple of hands here. Um, as we're moving on in the evening, it's almost nine o'clock. Um, obviously, we're not going to wrap this up one way or the other, or someplace in between. We're not going to be able to do any of that tonight. So I will entertain these current questions, comments. And then I want to hear from the applicant's attorney because there was a lot of comments against what the applicant is saying. And then we're going to wrap it up with a continuance to some date in the future. So, uh, Julia, you want to unmute, uh, Keith Glidden there, please?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I, I do think you should seek the advice of your town council because, uh, the definitions do matter. And if, uh, what they're applying for doesn't meet the definitional standard, and if there's actually a, a use that they're employing that is actually a different permit that they should be looking for, and in this case, it's actually a not allowed use, that would be a legally untenable decision. So it's actually extremely important that the definitions be, um, appropriate. And as far as the, um, the standard for a trade shop itself, if you are to treat it as a trade shop, the accessory use requirement under three point two point one requires that it must not be detrimental to the residential neighborhood. So the balancing test under the special permit, I believe, does not apply. So no matter amount of how much, uh, support in the neighborhood that they like, uh, artists or that the master plan promotes artists, it cannot be a detriment to the neighborhood. And the direct abutters are the most, um, appropriate as far as the consideration of the neighborhood because they are the direct neighborhood. And therefore, there's been ample, um, evidence in the letters that have been submitted by Yvette Tardif and Michael Hart on the detriment that they experience. And, um, as suggested, each individual and what they hear on a daily basis is extremely important irrespective of any decimal readings at any one particular time, especially given, I believe that, uh, applicants have not accurately, um, given the board, uh, an actual taste of what the orders and the noise are like. Uh, therefore, I think that the requirements, even under a special permit, are not even, um, met in this situation and the board should deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a question back to you. And that is, you're, you're saying it'll be detrimental to the neighborhood. And let's, let's propose a hypothetical that there is no outward noise, odor, lighting, or whatever coming out of that building, and there is no outdoor activity. Is that still a detriment to the neighborhood?
Sorry, he, he was, um, I, I muted him. You just have to.
So unmute yourself, Keith, and see if you can answer my question.
Well, I mean, in, uh, an unachievable, uh, hypothetical, um, then, then yes, I believe you're correct, but I, I don't think that that is even by the, um, the decibels that were taken um, by your own board members, so that that, that actually exists. So, um, hypothetically, we can, we can pose any hypothetical, but it has to be true. And I don't think in this case it would be.
All right. And the other, the other comment that I see is coming from Yvette. So Julia, can you unmute Yvette?
Yes. Thank you. Um, again, Yvette Tardif, one nineteen Summer Street. Just need to pull myself together a little bit. Um, I think that it would be very important for the board to review the amount of space that the, um, the mythmakers are using. They are using the place you looked at. However, they are also using most of the first floor of their house and their basement, which is equal to more than fifty percent of their, um, total structures. Um, artist studio is mentioned three times in the zoning bylaws, so I would also recommend that you guys review that to make sure because it isn't, it is not allowed in three different ways in an S1 zone. Um, furthermore, uh, we found a lot of falsities in the kind of materials that they presented that they are using based on their own, um, social media posts. Um, and one is called bronze. Bronze dust is extremely toxic. One is styrene. Styrene, if you breathe it in, is fatal. Um, according to the material safety data sheet, this is not like, this is all known information that you can, any person could Google or look up. Um, another one is fiberglass. Another one is resin. Um, they are not just using wood. They do make silicone molds. They use silicone. They use caulking. Um, and their, their studio is actually not set up in a way to properly handle these materials. As you saw, they have box fans that just did, that just pushed the dust out into our breathing space in the backyard, both from their basement studio where they have a, um, professional exhaust system and into their, um, studio space where they just have a box fan. So anything they do in there, we breathe it in. And I, I have asthma. I cannot breathe in any of these things. I cannot breathe in wood dust. Um, the dust is like untenable. So that's going, that's something that I do not think that they doing the kind of work they do will ever be able to mitigate in their current situation. Um, and then the paint fumes, you know, the paint fumes go on for.
Yeah, we, your, your two minutes are up. I'm sorry. As, as I said, I wanted to, you know, grab those two comments and then we, we need to move on. Um, there will be a chance, I believe, Amy and Bill Shue, that we talk again in about a month. Do you want to talk real quick? Yeah, all right.
Give them two minutes?
Yeah, give them a minute.
Yeah, give them one minute. Okay. Unmute you. Give you one minute.
Thank you. We shared that two minutes, so I feel like we get a little bit more time.
All right, but go ahead. Make it quick.
The major concern is that it took a lot to get us to this point to have some peace and to have a way to actually have a voice in this. And it was extremely hard. So we're very, very worried about what the future might hold, should it be condoned. We know that they can't stay within the limits or the confinements that they were given. And we worry about what the future might hold with restrictions or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I believe for this evening, that will conclude the discussions of people in favor and against, uh, or opposition, to use the right word, I guess. Um, but I do want to hear from the attorney for the butter, excuse me, the attorney for the applicant in just general terms about some of these comments that the folks in opposition have mentioned relative to what you are asking for. And my interpretation of what you are asking for is a special permit trade shop in the barn. Not out in the backyard and not in the house.
Sorry, um, would you like me to, to unmute the?
Unmute Attorney DeShens, please.
Hold on. Try to find him. Where'd he go? There he is.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Julia. Um, Mr. Chairman, I understand you've limited everyone's discussion tonight, and I too will try to stay within a two-minute limit. Although I suspect that we will have additional, um, testimony at your next meeting, or I would hope so. Uh, there were a number of things raised tonight and I can't possibly address them or answer them in two minutes, but I would make, like to make three quick points. One, I, I, I agree with everyone that the issue of what we're applying for and why has been determined by your building commissioner. He has determined that we are a trade shop, and then if we want to continue operating, we needed a special permit, and that's why we're here. Um, I would suggest that people read the entire definition of trade shop because it does talk about craftsmen. And quite frankly, if it allows carpenters, plumbers, tinsmen, and all upholsters, I suspect that would include the use of saws and hammers and other motors and tools. Um, with respect to manufacturing, again, read the definition. Uh, we are no way a manufacturing operation. Um, one of the things I've heard from most of the neighbors, um, is that, you know, they, 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 they don't think there's any limits and that these people will not um, adhere to limits. Mr. Chairman, as you've said, we've applied for a special permit. The board has the right to provide, um, conditions. In fact, I've submitted a proposed list of conditions my client would agree to or would, you know, like the board to consider. And what it does is it limits the time, the level of activity, when things can happen, when they can't happen. And yet, that's the very basis of a lot of the concerns I've heard. Is that, you know, it was too long or too late or too early in the morning. So I think that this could be very well-conditioned, um, to provide for, um, a defined set of activities which would address the neighbors' concerns. It would also give the building inspector and the town a mechanism for policing what they do. And should they step outside the boundaries of their conditions, then they could be, um, you know, their permit could be pulled. I think you need to give my clients an opportunity to show they can meet those conditions, uh, rather than just, um, convict them for, you know, proposed, uh, or, or suggested prior acts. Um, that's not the case here, as it was stated, we're seeking for building permit. And the last thing, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, I do agree with our council who earlier said that the criteria is only upon a finding by this board that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood. So you do need to consider the impacts of this operation on the town in general, not just the neighbors. And with respect to neighbors, I would like to point out that you've received somewhere around thirty-four letters of support. Um, we have fifteen, seventeen direct abutters or people that are considered abutters under your bylaw. We've got five who oppose and seven who support. We have one to two that do not oppose, but they don't want to be involved. So when you're balancing what the neighbors think, uh, please take into consideration all of the comments and the written statements from the abutters. You'll see that a majority of the abutters do in fact support us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I, I have a follow-up question relative to the type of questions I was asking the folks that were speaking in opposition. This is a special permit for use of the barn building for their activities. If the, uh, special permit decisions that we come up with have findings relative only to that building, that there is no outward noise, odors, nasty chemicals, and there is nothing happening in the yard, would your clients be amenable to that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my client would be amenable to any set of reasonable conditions that the board feels would be protective of the neighbors. I would, however, like you to consider, as I put in my proposed conditions, we certainly would like the opportunity to do noiseless activities outside. Uh, and with respect to activities that do create noises, um, you know, where we, we'd like an opportunity to provide, you know, for some limited timeframe, you know, during the day, in which case, I mean, people, people cut wood with their chainsaws a couple hours on, on a particular day. And I think at this point, that's all my clients would be looking to as well with respect to power stuff. They would limit their use to, as I've suggested, no more than two hours. And it would have to be during regular work hours. So it wouldn't be at night.
Yeah, but, but we're looking, and I'm trying to ignore the, the, the arguments against this being a trade shop. But in looking for this as a trade shop, there needs to be a line in the sand between homeowner activities and trade shop activities.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
And homeowner activities is likely things like mowing the lawn or clipping that nasty bush in the back corner, that kind of stuff. Whereas trade shop activities should occur within the building. And that, that's, I'm, I'm trying to find a middle road that works for, you know, most of the stuff. And if there is none, so be it. But that's what I would like to get some feedback on when we have our next meeting as to what would be a useful middle road.
We will, we will, uh, submit information on that regard, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. I appreciate everybody's, uh, patience in attending this. This has been one, uh, exhaustive meeting, part two. Unfortunately, we can't get to an end tonight. So I am looking for a date certain that we can post for the next portion of this meeting. And that next portion would be, uh, the board discussion of all the documents put in and perhaps questions to, uh, certain attorneys or abutters that might want to speak more. But I want to limit that because I think we've got the vast majority of the information now. And I want to move forward with wherever we're going with this thing.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that next, uh, month's meeting, CBA meeting, already has, um, three new applications that came in, um, in the past two days. So just so you're aware, um, that agenda is, is pretty full at this time. If you want to pick another date or, um, to a special meeting.
And what date is that that we're talking about?
Oh, sorry. The, um, the next meeting is the twenty-second of August, correct, Bill?
Correct.
Okay.
The, we have, um, at this point, uh, Mr. Chair, the, uh, if we're going to go outside of the, uh, regular meeting dates, barring, uh, a conflict, um, we have a number of dates if we went off Mondays, you know, we, we have, um, you know, a number of potential dates. I mean, if the board is willing to have an additional, we want to have an additional meeting in, uh, August.
I, I think we should continue. I don't want to postpone this indefinitely. And so I asked the, the board members, is there any Monday in August that is not available?
Hey, oh, sorry. Just trying to get everyone unmuted.
Oh, did anybody hear what I said?
Yes, you, we heard you. I just wanted to make sure everyone else, I, I asked you all to unmute board members, so.
All right.
There you go.
So Paige, is there any date, Monday in August, that you cannot make it?
Yes, um, unfortunately, August eighth and August twenty-ninth, um, I'll be traveling and unable to attend on those dates.
So does the fifteenth work?
The fifteenth would work, yep, and August first as well.
All right. Brad?
Um, August first is a bad day for me, but other than that, I might open.
So you can handle the fifteenth as well?
Absolutely.
Uh, Leslie? Unmute. Somehow. There you go.
Uh, I will not be here.
Uh, I will not be here.
Jerry?
On the fifteenth.
Yes, I have a conflict the fifteenth, but I can rearrange that, I'm good for the fifteenth.
Alright, so Leslie, you are our problem person.
Well, I'll be in France.
Oh. I'll carry your luggage for you.
Yeah. If I get, will you take that from me too?
You, you can get on a Zoom call from France.
Yeah, I'm not going to though.
Oh, oh, okay, alright.
So, are you blocked out for a couple of weeks then?
No, I, um, that's the only date that I absolutely can't.
This Chairman?
Yeah.
Might, might it be possible, depending on what you feel you'll need for time, that we could possibly. Would the board consider starting their meeting on the twenty-second an hour early? And just uh allowing an hour if, if the board thinks that'll be sufficient?
It, in my mind, it should be, because we're, we're most of the way there. I don't know what the answer is yet, I'm just, you know, we've got the data, now we just have to figure out what it means.
I, I've just suggested this.
Yeah, so is it, does a twenty-second work, Paige?
Yep.
Leslie?
Uh, yeah.
Jerry?
Um, I can make it work, I also chair the school building committee, we have a meeting that night at five o'clock with the architects and engineers. Um, if we start at six, I, I might have to join to meet a few minutes late. But I can join, I'm okay, the twenty-second early.
Alright, Brad, you can do it.
I can do it, but I think we're gonna need a lot more time than an hour. I think, I think the idea of having a special meeting and just a, a um you know, dedicating it to this, who are debating, um, well, I think will take up quite a bit of time. But that's, that's just my opinion.
You're probably right.
Well, is the board willing to meet on days other than Mondays, that's what I'm, if we got, you know, Mondays are traditional day, but
Yes.
Certainly other options.
Tuesday's good.
Of that same week?
The twenty-third?
Uh, maybe it's a planning board night, let's see.
That, that is a planning board night, um. But if we, if we, um. If we went to the thirtieth of August, that's not a planning board night, so that's an off week. Paige, did you say you're away on that day?
Uh, no, that, that would be back, I'm, I'm returning the night of the twenty-ninth.
Oh, okay, so that might be, um, so, so the thirtieth would work.
The thirtieth would work, yep.
Alright, Leslie, you're good for that?
Uh, yes, the thirtieth should be, okay.
Alright, Brad, I asked you, and Paige, you're set with it? I'm getting, you know, this is about as much as I can handle for a meeting night, this is like two hours of this. So.
When is a regular meeting in August?
The twenty-second.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, we're, we're already pretty full, it's, it's a, a lot of little petitions, but they're all in and advertised and so on. Um, would the board, if we're gonna meet on the, the thirtieth? Um, perhaps would a six o'clock start make it easier then?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yes.
Yep.
It'll go to meetings in August, but uh at least it gets the. And that'll be, just to confirm, we have um the Attorney General has authorized um virtual meetings until the spring, so we will meet virtually.
Yes, please. I mean, thi- this is working out, I can see the people speaking, I can hear them. It, it works out, sometimes in a, in a group meeting, you, can you say that again, please, you know, because they were far away, this works great.
Yes.
So, um, I need a motion to continue this hearing. Until Tuesday. The thirtieth of August at six P M.
Okay, and make a motion to uh continue this hearing until August thirtieth at six P M.
We'll get a second, Gary second.
Mr. Chair, excuse me for you, uh, did you wanna take any more comments, he said more hands up, I'm not sure if you wanna do that before your vote.
Um, just, uh, yeah, Mike, Michael, I, I, you've been patient, please, please, quick comment, take off your, your, there you go.
Hey, uh, I would like to be present for the meeting, but we are going to be traveling from the twenty-fifth till the eleventh. Um, in Europe also, um, is, I, I didn't, I, it seemed like you weren't gonna go through those dates, so I don't know if it matters or not to you guys, but.
Uh, presents an interesting challenge, I don't know the answer to that right now.
Sorry to be a pain, I know that Donna and Andy continued uh when they were traveling for the initial meeting uh in April. So I figured maybe I'd pop it out there that. I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, you, you have a counsel representing you, right, so they, they could step in if need be?
Uh, yeah, sure, will they be allowed to talk, I mean?
If. You, you, you have the experience with what the issues are. Um, I, I don't know if your counsel has that level of depth of understanding, but if.
Our document pretty much, I, I, I wanna get this settled as soon as possible too. So if it's, if it's a hassle and it's not gonna be able to happen on any day other than the thirtieth, then the thirtieth it is, but. Uh, you know, I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Is there any other date in August? That we can get everybody in? Uh, we're pushing it out, can we bring it in sooner, now Leslie, you're traveling from when to when?
Uh, the, well, I would be available like the first, the eighth. Or the second, the ninth.
Yeah, August first is next week, is that too soon?
No, that's, that's too soon, I'm out that day.
Okay.
How about the ninth, does that work?
The ninth looks like a, a good intermediate if that fits.
We have.
Ninth of August, we're talking?
Yeah, I think we just have to kind of just select it, and, and, uh, let's see, so the ninth of August would. So, that's a, is that plan, that's planning board, yeah, so this is planning board, this is, um, that's impossible.
Oh.
How about the sixteenth then?
No, Leslie's out, alright.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have, I think we've town council um on, online. Adam, is there a way, if Leslie couldn't make one of these meetings, uh, and there was not a vote taken at the end? Is, is it something where it could be addressed with a Mullen rule, uh, and where she reviews the video signs, the um. The uh, or attests to having viewed this, um, this, this rate, in, in the middle of August and vacation season, this is absurd. It's just too hard, we're gonna be herding cats all night, do you see that as a possibility, Adam?
I, I don't, Mr. Chairman, through you, so, so uh the Mullen rule can't be used uh when the individual who is missing the meeting. And would essentially certify as to reviewing the transcript is missing a meeting in which a vote is taken, that simply doesn't work, you, you've.
No, I'm saying if there wasn't a vote, in other words, if the vote was postponed till return.
Oh, oh, only if there wasn't a vote, then yes, certainly, the Mullen rule, the exception could be used, you know, I, I do wanna say this. And, and I say with all due respect to, to, to all those attending, in an ideal world, we could continue these public hearings to a date when. Even in the most controversial projects, when every member of the board, every applicant, every applicant's consultant, every abutter, every opponent, supporter can be present. But the reality is that that doesn't work, and it often doesn't work in, in, in the middle of the summertime, so. Um, the, the, the important players here are the board members, because those are the individuals that are voting, of course, on the application. And the applicant, it, it's a, it's an application presented by the applicant, the, the, the supporters who might be residents of the community or not. The opponents who might be residents of the community or not, certainly if there's the ability to accommodate them, that's one thing. But their presence isn't a necessity in terms of the project moving forward and the application moving forward. So, I think if we have a date in late August that works for all parties, meaning the board members and the applicants, then we, we proceed with that date.
Then we can't use like, uh, you know, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth. People aren't around, are we missing members then?
So I, I could do any of those dates of that week. What's happening in town, is there uh another meeting on the twenty-fourth?
Uh, so the, I don't know off the top of my head, but uh on about Wednesday, I know there are a few people who do meet uh committees on Wednesdays. But um Conservation Commission um does meet on Thursdays.
So if we were to shoot for the twenty-fourth, does that work?
I don't show anything that would conflict on the twenty-fourth.
I think it's only school committee, so, but Jerry, you're saying that, the, oh, you're on the, you're the.
School building committee.
Building, that's a different one, sorry.
Yeah, we do not have, I'm clear that night, twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth.
I've gone through one pad here with dates, wait a minute, let me, okay, so it would twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth or twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, I guess.
Okay, this is the twenty-fourth. Would, um, and if there was, uh, let's see, I'm trying to think, if, I don't think there's a conflict on the Zoom. If so, we could get a different Zoom line, that's no problem. Um. Would it, and again, would you guys want a six P M start on the twenty-fourth?
Could we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Days are long enough as they are.
So, these, these four ZBA members, all okay? Brad, you okay with the twenty-fourth?
Yep, that works for me.
Um. Now, Michael, you had said you had some conflict, is, does the twenty-fourth fix it or not? It's good, excellent, so let's book the twenty-fourth and somebody make a motion to that date.
Six P M on the twenty-fourth, and it will be on virtual whenever the um motions made this.
Make a motion that we continue this uh hearing uh on August twenty-fourth at six P M and that it be conducted by Zoom.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hey, get my hand in there, yeah. So that's that, um, so we're contin- oh, then I need a motion to continue. Did, we didn't say it formally, is that part of this vote we just had, or should we have a second vote to say we are continuing this current hearing?
I did say continue the hearing.
Good, okay, I missed that word, thank you. Um, other than that, um. I would suggest that we. Uh, what's a technical word that we're not closing the meeting, but we're closing the meeting, what's that word?
Dern?
Dern, there, there you go, is that the right word?
I, I always get them confused, some others.
Well, you, I think, oh, Adam, adjourned. Is closing the meeting where there's no other business, I believe, is, and I think, uh.
Correct, if, if you've, if you've continued the hearing, there's nothing more to do on the hearing, you move to the next item on your agenda, when you adjourn, you're closing your meeting.
And our next item is to adjourn slash close meeting.
And that's it.
Alright, I need a vote, a motion for that.
And make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, second, Jerry second, all in favor? Hey.
Alright.
So, everybody.
Thank you, and I appreciate everybody's patience, and I appreciate all the comments that came in. And we will see you guys in a month.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
So, we have a couple of hands up, are the, these are just, you know.
No, that's, that's not me, I'm sorry.
Okay, Amy and, and Bill, you had your hand up still, what is this about?
Do you like me to unmute them?
Yeah, unmute them, it is, you know.
We adjourned the meeting, so.
Right, this.
Okay.
You had mentioned um about the documentation that was submitted and that you would review it. Was there any uh special way that we needed to provide it extra, other than just submitting it to the email addresses and having it on Board Docs?
Having it on Board Docs is good, Bill Nemser is the coordinator of all paperwork. But when we got a slew of stuff at six o'clock tonight, I mean, come on, guys, I mean, we, we can't read that.
We sent ours before.
Yeah, but there was a bunch of stuff that came tonight.
Well, I understand, I just wanted, I didn't know if there was any process for getting uh for, for a butters.
Um, whatever, just give it to Bill, email Bill.
I, I think what Mr. Shu's asking is, do you want paper copies, is that correct? Uh, everything has been distributed electronically and is placed also on Board Docs, so it, I guess in the case of, um. If, if, I guess, what I would recommend is if the board wants um paper copies of anything. Th- then I can uh either um depend on the size of them, but I can advise the uh uh shoes or whoever, if they wanna have it, and then they're not printing up stuff for, you know, just a waste.
I, I think, un- unless somebody specifically asks, I think electronic is good enough. Um, I would drown if everything on this case was made into paper.
Oh.
You know, we're probably up about two inches now, maybe three inches.
I just wanted to make sure I could provide it in the correct format for you.
Yeah, yeah, sure, but electronically is fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
They remain, as the board knows, we keep the old, um, the old meeting materials remain as well, so everything's archived and, and should be accessible. And, all right, you know, you, you, board, you always know if you want something electronically, I mean, hey, we're just calling.
Okay. So again, thank you very much, everybody, and we will see you guys in a month.
Thank you.
Bye, bye. Thanks, everybody.